Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg special meeting for Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. This time I'll ask everybody in the room to please silence or turn off their cellphone in respect to the decorum of the meeting. And now I'll ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, will never be unjustified.
Okay, so. For the meeting, we're going to go through our normal permutations regarding future meetings. We'll talk about meeting items, for example, commissioner comments, mayor comments, public comments. And then we'll move to the agenda item. I'll provide a quick overview of the process so everybody understands. When we get to the agenda item, those who are being interviewed are going to encounter five questions. You have four minutes per question. You don't have to use all four if you choose not to. When those folks are being interviewed, those who are also applicants have an option to either be in the room for the interview. Or they can be in the mayor's office. He's offered it as sort of a green room. So you can be there where you will not hear the questions if you want to come in with a fresh position. Separate from what's being presented by other interviewer, interviewees.
It's actually not optional.
Oh, I thought we have an open meeting and therefore.
We do, but it's highly requested that they wait in the mayor's office to not give somebody an unfair advantage.
Understood. Okay, well, it is requested then, though it is still an open meeting. Okay, so moving from there. The process, we've investigated the process and I will take no credit for it. This has been done by the mayor. This is done by staff. They've spoken with other municipalities and looked at their format. If you've looked at the language in the town ordinances, you can see it's fairly open to what the board itself can do regarding this choice process. The Maryland State's Attorney Office was consulted and the process that we're using is compliant with what they've put forward and then what is in practice? In another municipality in Frederick County. So these are sort of the boundaries. For a future item, I believe the board will come back to this process and we will look at something a little bit more structured. In order to have a perhaps a clearer path. So that's the overview. Okay. Now, at the end of that, when the interviews are concluded, the public meeting will end. The public meeting will not reconvene. The board will move to a closed session. And at that time, we will discuss a personnel matter and I'll explain that in more detail when the time comes for that part of the process. So. That's where we are. So at this time, I'll move to announcements related to future meetings. The planning commission meeting will occur on October 30th, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the town office. It's available via Zoom. The Parks Committee will meet on November 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the town office. The Christmas tree lighting date has been set for December 4th at 6:00 PM in front of the community center. So where we are now, the Board of Commissioners will meet. December 5th is outcome of.
Tuesday.
Okay, so, so we meet on the 5th and not meet on that Monday night, therefore the 4th. Okay. Between now and then, we will have another meeting in November. Okay. So at this time, commissioners, are there any comments you would care to share? Mr. Turnquist.
Yes, thank you to the applicants who stepped up and submitted an application. I know it's a tough job. It's going to be tough tonight, but good luck to all of you. I'd also like to talk about the process a little bit. The code of ordinance does state that the majority of the commissioners will fill the vacancy for an open seat. And I don't feel that the commissioners have had enough input into that process. I would like to make a motion now or at some point during the meeting. That we table the interviews until such time that we can discuss the process further. I think it's important to come back to an open meeting after we have the closed session. In order to hold that vote in the public forum, which is in line with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. I think we need to be transparent with our decision and the public is entitled to be here for that vote.
Commissioner Donald, at the mayor's request, it's being added to the first agenda item at the November 6th town meeting.
Clarify what's being added to the.
The. Where's my notes here?
Process.
The approval of the new commissioner.
Okay.
So the, she's absolutely right. The vote does have to occur in open session. So that will happen at the November 6th meeting.
Okay, so.
So we will, we will be voting at that meeting. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner?
That's it for now.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney.
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Roman Pollock.
Again, I just want to echo, thank you to all of the applicants who went through this process. Wish you best of luck. I don't know if anybody's listening on Zoom, but I did want to reiterate that we do have an important. Planning Commission meeting coming up where we start the first phase of the comprehensive plan. Which is really going to help guide where we want our town to go and then, and in the upcoming years. So. If you haven't checked your water bill, there was a flyer in the water bill for you to fill out a survey. Where you can make your thoughts known. If not, you can find that on the town website. As well as feel free to participate in any of those upcoming planning commissions. We want to hear from the residents. We want to hear from. The town as far as where you would like to see our comprehensive plan go. And also with Halloween coming up, just be careful of the kiddos and thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of quick things. The mayor is not here tonight. You may have gathered. He's actually attending a meeting with the county executive. The mayors and the leaders of the municipalities of Frederick County meet with the county executive. This one sometimes happens during the day. Sometimes it happens at night, but this is a special meeting. So the timing sort of overlapped and that was not intended. So Mayor Davis is not with us this evening and that's a pretty important reason. Also, a unique thing happened is that the town planner is attending that meeting and this is the first time planners have been allowed to attend the meeting with the county executive. So this is very hopefully a positive thing. So to my own comments again, thank you all for applying. It is appreciated. I hope you know what you're getting in for. I think a few of you do, as you have lived it. Nevertheless, I won't hold things up. So. The mayor, there are no comments that he's shared with staff that he wants presented. No? All right, so we turn to public comments. I don't know that we have anybody signed up for public comments. We do not. Okay. So we move to agenda item number one, and this is the Board of Commissioners hosting interviews for an open commissioner position. With that, Commissioner Turnquist, I'm going to turn back to you. You'd asked to make a motion. Are you satisfied at this point that the process is transparent? So the vote occurs in a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay, sure, sure. Just want to make sure we're all aligned. Okay, thank you. All right, therefore. The process specifically, there are five questions. The interviewees have the opportunity to answer them. You have four minutes correct per, the timer is going to be set or a separate timer will be set. We ask you comport your comments to that timeframe and I don't know if we have a sequence for candidates to be.
We do. That should be in the email that I sent. It was.
Very good.
It was done based off of the date and time each candidate submitted.
Okay.
On that email, if you need it, I have it.
Sure. So Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Commissioner or Commissioner Candidate Hagan, it would be Candidate Hagan, Candidate Blanchard, Candidate Hoover, and then Candidate Frager.
Okay.
Would be the, the order that we received.
Okay, so. How to say it? The request has been put forward for the other candidates to retire from the room should you choose to do so. The mayor's office is available to you. Should the rest of you choose to stay, it is an open meeting. You're welcome to stay. And we invite Commissioner Candidate, Mr. H to come forward and. Encounter some questions for yourself, sir. For the board members, I'm going to ask you each ask your question, questions. And I don't know who wants to go first, but the first question.
Can you just give them one, one minute?
Sure, to clear.
Yes, please.
Okay. Start the question.
Oh, I thought you.
No, 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 no. I just, I just wanted to, you know, whomever did number one, that will be yours. Number two, that will be yours and so forth. Okay. So Ms. Willis, do you want to wait till staff has returned?
Is she good with the camera? That's fine.
Okay, so we're good to start? Okay, so question number one, I don't know who the author is. All right, okay, very good.
Good evening, Mr. Hagan. First question, how do you, or what do you hope to accomplish as commissioner? And how does your unique experience and skillset assist you with these goals?
Okay, I, couple of things that I really want to accomplish. We have some overarching issue in the town. Such as traffic, the cost of water. I think we can address some of the water, I think, as Commissioner Turnquist mentioned. We could do some budget investigation to see what's there. I am also concerned. We have a large percent of our population is below the Alice line. What happens with them? Are we going to look for any grant money to help them pay? Are we going to cut off the water? I don't see us cutting off their water, but not cutting off their water isn't an answer to the solution. We need something better. What are we going to do? And I don't think we've done all the investigation and that. Traffic, we're kind of stuck on actually. There's not a lot you can do. We can work with timing of the lights, but especially during traffic season, we're kind of stuck, you know, at the town center. Not to, each community has, it's also its own overarching enemy. Emmett Gardens is concerned about flooding. You know, I hear stories of, you know, popping out of the sewer. And everything in water there during heavy times. We need to address what we can do in water supply. North Gate on the same thing is concerned. They have one exit out. It floods. Where do they go? Now we have a proposed community with townhouses on the other side, but it hasn't happened yet. You know, you get back to some other communities. Their concern is parking being violated told, oh, you can't park on curbs. Well, I think as Mr. O'Donnell, Mrs. Turnquist can validate, they don't have curbs and they got fined for it. You know, and my own thing, the concern is negotiations with the city over property of land. Who owns it? It's going on now for three years, which is kind of ridiculous on both sides. So you got to look at each community, what their overarching thing, the business community. I can tell you as one of the leaders of the Business Association, we have major concerns with a lot of the town rules such as. Two signs per business in your windows. You're never going to see a liquor store with two signs. It's just not going to happen. And to say, well, we're not going to enforce this is fine for who's currently in administration, but when it's on the books, that doesn't mean it's always not going to be enforced. And we need to look at that. And I can tell you for personal, I've been on the planning commission for a number of years. So I've seen. The ups and downs of what we want to do as a computing and what's planned coming in. I can tell you where we've changed from the last 10 year plan. Coming in, it's head of the Business Association. I can tell you how to wrangle cats. Our business owners all want different things at different time and some don't make sense and we can't adjust. I mean, coming back, I have a degree in political science. This is what I live for. And everything, you know, it's the people that know me, I'm a politician at heart and I own that where some people consider that a problem. That's who I am and how I operate. And so I own that part of who I am and all of you have seen me pester you on certain issues. Or certain things I like for the Business Association or for the communities already.
Thank you.
Question two.
That's also me.
Oh, sorry.
Back to me. Question number two, what steps should the Board of Commissioners take to ensure transparency and accountability?
I think a lot is held by Maryland's open meeting laws that force everything to be open, including. Three of you can't get together at any one time. And I remember, you know. There was a campaign thing for Commissioner O'Donnell the last year and the mayor was there and Commissioner Sweeney was there and the panic was. What happens if somebody else comes? It's a meeting that's unannounced. So I think by announcing the meetings, I would like to see. Other ways that we announce to get the citizens more involved. I'm sure Commissioner Sweeney remembers during meetings when the room was packed. And now we have a handful and I've been here when it's me and two other people, if we're lucky. We have to find a way to engage the public. I'm not going to tell you I have a magic answer to it. But I think we need more better than the town's website and Facebook and putting it out. That's not getting to our communities because electronic means do not work. We have a large section of our community that isn't there. I mean, the average age in Emmitsburg, according to the last census is 43 years old. My feeling is that's the average, but we have a lot that's over that. I mean. I talked last year in delivering the Christmas baskets to a lot of our elder community. As my wife and I deliver those baskets and one of the things they asked, they knew I was a planning commissioner, a lot of them, they're like, what's going on? We don't know. I think it's important that we go out as commissioners meet. I would love to see people at HOA meetings to engage. The public there or go out and say that. I know I got grief during the last election because I knocked on pretty much every door. And if people opened, I talked to them to hear what they wanted and told them what I wanted. I think commissioners need to get out there in the public rather than hearing from the same four people that bend their ears to things. Because I can tell you, I'm one of those people that bends your ears to say, hey, do this or we'd like that. And. You need to hear from more than that. You have to get out in the community rather than get a couple emails. And I mean, that's why I said get out to HOAs, 10 different club meetings. They're out there, attend the Lions Club meeting. Yes. Three people can't go, but for the Business Association, we've had two of you at a lot of our meetings. You know, we understand that limit, but that's lets the business community tell you what they want. They get to hear what you want. Same thing at HOA meetings, same thing at Lions Clubs meeting. And a lot of our organizations, people can attend and say that and say, just give your feedback. Of this is what's going on. This is what we propose, our solution to be, what do you think? Get that larger feedback in. I'm so scared about so few people attending, you know, how do we reach out? And we can't just use electronic means. We do. We got to physically go out there and say. Hey, what do you think? This is what we plan. I mean, I love when people come to the Business Association meetings. And here is bitch at you. And that's what it is, but it also gives you a chance to say, hey, I agree, I disagree and we should go here.
Thank you.
Okay, question three.
It's me.
Okay.
At the April Town Board meeting, the board approved on a four to one vote. An ordinance to increase water rates by 36% per year for the next five years. And thereafter, an annual increase of 3%. If fully implemented, the five years of increases will increase the cost of water to residents by 363%. For those using the minimum amount. Would you have voted for or against this ordinance to increase the water? And please explain your answer.
If I was there, I would have tried to delay the vote looking for more information. I think. What budget wise could have been used to offset that increase? Because I, and before you vote, is there a plan to handle people that are on a limited income? Our seniors, again, our families that are below the Alice line. Are we looking for grants that can help them pay this bill and offset her? You know, I hate to say it, the water increase in totality was needed. We haven't increased it for years and we need it. Without that increase, we're not going to get federal funds without fund or funds. We're sunk as a town. You know, that's the honest reason the water increase is going on is because that federal funds. Said, hey, we're not going to give you money unless we see you're operating better and moving towards not losing money. Makes sense. All the years we didn't raise it was a mistake and just put it off and put it off. If. All of that was done and we had a plan in place for our communities below the Alice line, for our people on fixed incomes. And we've looked at the budget to say, can we move dollars in some of this to offset? I would have voted to approve it without any of that being done. I would voted no. It's, I think there was so much work that needs to be done. As I spoke at that meeting for the Business Association. There's also concern from the businesses. That's going to raise their rates incredibly. The Business Association is just coming out of COVID. And the businesses are down. Food prices are going through, all their other supplies are going through the roof. And nobody talked to them about it. Not one commissioner came to the businesses and said, hey. What do you think? What are your concerns? No. That's poor. I mean, that's a major driver, you know, for in-town employment. And where their fees are going and nobody reached out and talked to them. And I got four minutes to come up here and talk to you and say why the businesses were. I couldn't explain everything that. The Business Associate members were calling me and emailing me and texting me saying, hey, we're doing this and. We're concerned about this and hey, we may have to cut our staff from full-time to part-time. Or we may have to not hire this person or we may not be able to do this any longer with this. So none of those concerns were taken in. We didn't look at a budget. I know Commissioner Turnquist was really concerned about the budget. I heard from her. You know, when she elected to run, I've talked to her during planning, commissioning meetings. That's a legitimate concern. And again, it wasn't done. Nobody looked at the budget. I don't think any one of you has dug into the budget line by line. I know Commissioner, you know, Bowman Pollock looked at some things, but it wasn't in totality. Mayor Davis plans on doing it when, you know, he came to the Business Associate and said, but. So it depends on those things, how I would have voted. None of them being done, I would have voted no to the increase.
Thank you.
Okay, question five. No, wait, sorry, question four, forgive me.
That's not his question.
Email was for you to read number four.
Oh, it's.
His question. Okay.
Yes.
I didn't see his email, forgive me.
Is your number five, correct?
Yes, okay. Who's, who is the, I did not because I'm running the meeting. Who is the author of the question? Yes, okay. Tell us about a time when you had to deal with a complicated or detailed conflict. How did you go about navigating and resolving that situation? Please share your general thoughts on communication skills and conflict resolution.
I'll give you one that kind of amazed me. I'm part of Maryland's Medical Reserve. When COVID happened, I got called up. We were doing clinics all over Frederick to give people shots. When we started, it was a nightmare. We didn't have organization. And we were wasting. What we gave to people. So when you draw stuff out of the vial. You don't want to waste it. If, I'll give you an example. If I draw 10 shots and the shots are drawn in advance and given to the field shots, but only four are there. I've now wasted everything else. It goes away and waste. And. We came up with a policy. There was like six of us working together that worked out how we can control that. Who could we call in? We were notorious for calling the police and calling the fire department. Hey, has anybody got it? I got four shots left. Come on in. And it was a big thing. We reduced it down to nothing here in Frederick County. And I can tell you. As an, as an employee of Wellspan, I worked the clinics during the day. There I wasn't running them. I managed to make sure we were recording everybody's stuff. Huge waste. So. As part of the medical reserve here, we did it a lot better. A lot of people are, and I said, one of the things I got, and I got it from the EMTs here in Emmitsburg. We, everybody came in, we could take volunteers. As the day wound down, let's assume I had 20 people given shots. We started letting people go. You know, because we didn't need that many inoculating during the end. So I'd let people go. What I found out afterwards were the EMTs were getting paid, were making money there. So. I got an earful. My wife is an EMT there. They gave her an earful. So trying to manage that with and talking and saying, okay, now that I know. That you're doing this, we can work towards you being the last people here. Because I understand you want to make a buck out of it and not everybody's. Part of the medical reserve where we are forced to do it free. So it's handling things like that, juggling all the balls. Handling people coming in. I had grandparents come in and brought their grandson in to get a shot. And the grandmother said, I was there because the parents wouldn't allow him to get the shot. Calming everybody down is the parents sitting down with the grandmother and explaining why we can't give the shot. The child wasn't old enough to give consent. Or we had. People that could give consent came in with their parents. Parents want the shot and they don't. I remember one girl, I spent three hours in a room just talking to her to explain. Know this, I had another guy, I spent 40 minutes that said, oh, we're putting nanobots in there. Ended up having to run a phone up and down in the show. There was no signal coming out of this thing. So it's. Handling all types of requests, some that are out of bounds. It's just talking people down. But it's also managing who's right in the position at that time. I mean, and at work managing hundreds of people. Handling it. It's putting the right healthcare worker in the place at the right time, which can be a work in healthcare. And I've worked the majority of my adult life in healthcare.
Thanks, sir. We turn to question five. Commissioner Sweeney, is that you?
Yeah, it's seven one suite. Not over complicated. What, what will you do to help bring Emmisburg prepared for the future? The talent itself.
So for the future, I said, there is a lot of things is we're about to embark on another 10-year plan. I think one of the key things we need to do in development and development is going to happen. It's the natural thing. We have to watch that it doesn't chew into our parkland. We have to keep that recreational area. Emmitsburg has a great parks and trail system and we can't bite into that and say, oh, we want another 100 houses. Can't do that. We have to protect our parkland. We also have to look at what we can do to increase business. The east side of 15 is coming. You know, we're talking about a business park over there that'll come and it still has room for other things. We have to work with the landowners and developers in these industrial zoned areas. Of what they can do and help get them there and not burning them with owning some things and make them give. Constant fees that are just for no purpose and don't us them. We also have to watch our housing developers and not give them. We also have to watch our housing developers and not give them everything they want. If you're coming in, you pay for the water taps, you pay for everything the town is supplying you. You have to kick up. I would love us to also issue a fee that they have to help for a fee to the school. No, Emmitsburg does not finance the school. We can make donations to the school. Our school is hurting. If you've walked it, it needs a lot of repairs. I know the principal says it's great. It's worked. I've been through the school. It needs roof repairs. It needs a lot of thing. A lot of our parents are taking their kids to Thurmond and not keeping them here for various reasons. And we need to fix those reasons as fast as possible. It's Emmitsburg needs to keep its younger and its older population here. We forgot both. There's nothing here. We need to work to address both of those ends. You know, what do we have for them? I remember Mayor Davis once gave me the comment. And we were talking, he'd love to have something for his mother and there's nothing here, nowhere for her to go. Housing she can get. She would like to get our house. That's a great little project. What are we doing? We can drive a lot of that. When we say we don't have enough dentists, why aren't we as commissioners and the mayor going to these association meetings and saying Emmitsburg is a great place to business? Emmitsburg is a great place to bring, you know, your restaurant. All these people have association meetings. Why aren't we there? I see Tony Town there. Why aren't we there? So we have to grow. We have to be involved with all of our things. And we have to understand the majority of our population is below the Alice line. And I keep harping on that. We can't give them money. That's not what we can do. But what programs can we do to help? Can we help fund after school programs? Can we do something to help them out? Can we work with, you know, like our interfaith association to make sure distribution of food or various things are done and work with these private organizations. I mean, we got to step up.
Well done. Thank you, sir. Staff, process.
Thank you. Ask for the next candidate.
Okay, we will now ask for the next candidate. Sir, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. He can absolutely stay now.
Sure.
Up until the point where you go to closed session.
Okay.
Yeah. The next one would be Mr. Blanchard.
Mr. Blanchard, good evening. Welcome. Come on up. So Mr. Blanchard, you're going to encounter five questions from different commissioners.
Okay.
posed them to you. And we'll start with Commissioner Bowman-Pallett with question one.
Um, good evening, Mr. Blanchard. Question one, what do you hope to accomplish as commissioner and how does your unique experience and skillset assist you with these goals?
Okay. I think basically what I look at is more like how to serve the town of Emmitsburg, how to help out the people as best as possible. Each one is a constituent, each citizen, basically taxpayer citizen, looking basically for best service from the town itself. From a unique background, what I'm looking for is coming from 14 years of experience as elected official. I've served most of the positions on the town council. And then basically what occurs basically with, you know, being a treasurer, serving as the liaison to the planning commission, et cetera. And helping out with basically different committees and trying to meet the town moving forward. And again, focusing on basic customer service, helping out individuals in town as best as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll move to question two.
Yes, question two is also me.
Okay.
What steps should the Board of Commissioners take to ensure transparency and accountability?
Okay, well, I was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Turnquist. Opened Meetings Act, making sure basically the meetings are open and public. So people can absolutely come in, basically sign up to do questions. Making sure the public record, making sure that the meetings are filmed. So if people can attend the meetings, they can actually take the film, take a look at it later on. Having access basically through the internet to ask questions of the board, the mayor, et cetera. Having town staff forward the information onto the town commissioners and the mayor to make sure they can understand what's going on and avoid any confusion.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we turn to question three, Commissioner Turnquist.
Good evening. At the April Town Board Meeting, the board approved on a four to one vote an ordinance to increase water rates by 36% per year for the next five years and thereafter an annual increase of 3%. If fully implemented, the five years of increases will increase the cost of water to residents by 363%. Would you have voted for or against this ordinance? And please explain your answer.
Okay. Based on the information I've seen in both the newspaper, attending meetings, reading, et cetera. I would have to say I would vote no against it. The reason I'm going to say vote no is that I think there might have been a better way to kind of slow down for a second. And I think about what the water rate is going to mean to individual taxpayers. When it comes to the large inflation rate that's occurring right now. I read some things in the paper obviously from you that I think looking at the budget, you know, point by point, trying to examine where we can cut. But also we're looking at the possibility of looking at general fund, not maybe to pay all of the difference, but pay part of the difference. I think some of it can be done with increasing the tax base through basically obviously housing development. I was disappointed with the, you know, the fairly property when it didn't occur. I think to a great extent, the only way we can avoid some of these increases is basically going to be development, whether it be commercial development, and probably more importantly, retail development. So I think at the time I would have voted no. But voted no in saying that we just looked down the road and see what else we could do to try to avoid that problem. So I'm fully aware that pure, as a time, sorry, I'm fully aware that, you know, people are strapped. And basically, you know, when it comes to inflation rate and everything else, that we could avoid trying to pass on to the taxpayers the best we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I want to interrupt for a second. There's a pinging that's going on. Is that from Zoom? Could you, could you please silence that? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Question four comes from Mayor Davis. I'll, his behalf. Okay. Please tell us about when you had to deal with a complicated or detailed conflict. How did you go about navigating and resolving that situation? Please share your general thoughts on communication skills and conflict resolution.
Okay. In 29 years of education and the classroom instruction, I've dealt with more than my share of conflict with both parents and students. I'll give, you know, different situations where I had to deal with violent situations in my classroom. I had basically get involved in it, trying to break up students from fighting. I dealt with angry parents on the phone, dealt with angry parents on the internet, et cetera. And I think one of the biggest things to prevent anything from further going forward is basically being proactive as possible can. So if I'm having a student in my classroom that's having problems academically or behavior wise, contacting the parent directly and going, look, this is basically what's happening with your son or your daughter is what we need to try to do to avoid it. So I think when it comes to conflict, you have to try to be proactive best as possible can, try to deal with the situation and don't kick the can down the road.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney, we turn to you, sir.
What will you do to help bring that's work prepared for the future?
Yeah. Well, I think I'm going to use proactive more than anything else. Basically with a commercial residential development, looking down the road, trying to basically be ahead of the curve when it comes to development in the county. It seems like my 32 years living in this town has always been, we always seem to be on the end of the housing development. See if we can't be at the beginning of the next housing boom and try to basically look at development. A fairly property, I think at some point it's going to have to get developed. I think for some or another, we need to basically figure out what our options are now. So when the next housing boom occurs, we could be ahead of it. Other issues proactivewise, dealing with water and sewer rates, obviously, which has been already brought up. Dealing with expansion of the playground equipment in town. But again, I think the key word always is going to be proactive and deal with the problems before they even occur.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome to stay in the room and watch the.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, folks. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so staff, staff is bringing our next party forward?
Yes, she went back.
Great.
It should be Mr. Hoover.
Okay. Correct, yes. Good evening, Mr. Hoover. Thank you. I'll turn the first question to from Commissioner Bowman-Pallett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Question number one is what do you hope to accomplish as commissioner? And how does your unique experience and skillset assist you with these goals?
Say the first part again, please.
Sure. How do you, or sorry, what do you hope to accomplish as commissioner?
Well, I would like to hope that we can accomplish unity and talk with town and provide excellent customer service. And can you say the other half?
Thank you. How does your unique experience and skillset assist you with these goals?
Well, I served so far as four years, four and a half years as commissioner for the town of Emmitsburg and about nine and a half years as mayor. And then in my professional life, then I've been worked for the Maryland Department of Transportation. I work for county government now in Anaronda County. And oversee different building maintenance. I've ever seen, you know, been director of mark train service. So a lot of, lot of 40 years of managerial experience, dealing with some large budgets. Multiple, multiple millions of dollars in budgets and finance assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am also number two.
Number two, yes.
Just keep the mic on. What steps should the Board of Commissioners take to ensure transparency and accountability?
Well, I think a lot of it is these public meetings, open meetings, having it broadcasted on TV. And I know now with the internet and everything else, there's a lot of opportunities for people to express their opinions, you know, through social media and give that. So I think actually that part, I think is, a lot of that is being well done. And it's just a matter of them being out in the community and being involved in different events or being at least visible and, and being open to comments and questions and meeting people as needed, where needed.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Turnquist, we turn to you for question three.
Hi.
Hi.
At the April Town Board Meeting, the board approved on a four to one vote an ordinance to increase water rates by 36% per year for the next five years. And thereafter, an annual increase of 3%. If fully implemented, the five years of increases will increase the cost of water to residents by 363%. Would you have voted for or against this ordinance? And please explain your answer.
I would have voted against it. And part of that is after the five years, four, 4.8%, for 400, it's almost a 500% increase, 4.80%. But I think forecasting now five years for that much of an increase at one time. I think we should have, if there needed to be an increase, deal with on that first year, year by year case pattern and make everybody understand, be aware of what the impact is and implications of it, of doing or not doing that much. But I don't, I think the long term or actually the permanent increase of the 36% for five years and then 3% thereafter, I think it was over aggressive. Absolutely, I would have voted against it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, this is from Mayor Davis. Please tell us about a time when you had to deal with a complicated or detailed conflict. How did you go about navigating and resolving that situation? Please share your general thoughts on communication skills and conflict resolution.
We're dealing with conflict, I guess, some difficult situations. As I said earlier, it was a matter of rather be on the phone. I'm not, I'm not a real big fan of the social media way to deal with, deal with folks or to, you know, to resolve issues. I'd rather do it either over the phone in person or in person is my preferred matter. I'd rather meet here at the town office or rather meet at, you know, an agreed upon location. But to meet equal, you know, together and discuss the issues and explain why we can or why we can't do what they're asking for. The answer may still be no. But there's, you know, a lot of ways to say no. And I think it just mostly you have to inform them why, why you're doing it and to help them understand it. So they understand that, that question. But answer everything.
Yes, you nailed it. Thank you, sir. You hit each part. We now turn to Commissioner Sweeney for his question.
I think the comp plan is a good start. I don't know when the last one was done. I've been involved in those several times and but I think the comp plan is a, is a great place where to start for the, for the town's future and how it will be laid out and what zoning will be available and what type of housing or what type of business will be will be available or allowed to build or, or to grow the town. You know, obviously you need businesses to, for the town to be able to succeed and be able to have the finance coming in and you know, the businesses cost, cost the town less money to have than the residence, residential home and does. So I think the comp plan is the best place to, to begin with, starting to map out the town's future. You're welcome.
So those are the questions. Thank you, sir.
Cool. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoover, Anna Rundle County is further than Baltimore, though. Is that right? Your commute?
65, 65 miles one way.
That was, it was Baltimore before, wasn't it?
It was.
Okay.
So I moved a little bit, went a little bit farther. Four more years. That's automatic. Four more years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any better? Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Figger will invite you up to the podium. There are a series of five questions you'll hear from board members. We'll ask you to answer each as best you can in a frame of four minutes and we'll have the lights to give you sort of an indication where you are in the timeline.
Okay.
So the first question comes from Commissioner Bowman-Pallett.
I just didn't know the lights coming down. That's all. Good evening. Question number one. How do you, what do you hope to accomplish as commissioner? And how does your unique experience and skillset assist you with these goals?
Interesting question. So I'm not walking into this as if I had a platform. It's a different situation in my mind. And so a technique that I've used in my career is to walk into is to walk into a situation where you have to first adapt to the environment that you're exposed to. You then respond with your observations, your thoughts, your feelings, your insight. And the last step would be you then begin to innovate with the ideas that would bring you closer to the people that you're working with in order to create a team. Because in this environment without teamwork, it doesn't work real well. So I've just spent more than a year on the Board of Directors at Brookfield, which was an interesting environment because it was made up of people who didn't know each other. And in order to develop any kind of trust, there was a lot of work that had to be done ahead of time. So adapt, respond, innovate is my step one. Beyond that, you know, there are certainly things that I've observed with respect to how Emmitsburg is run. While I have my own thoughts, I first want to understand where the team that I'm going to be a part of stands on those issues. So I think I can say fairly safely that if you were to ask yourself, who and what is the check and balance to the mayor and the town staff? One might say it's the Board of Commissioners. But the observations that I've made with the board and, and the way they're given information, the way, the amount of time they have to prepare and respond. And, and again, I'm not here to complain about anything, but it, it's very clear to me that if this Board of Commissioners is the check and balance to the mayor and their staff, then perhaps there are other thoughts that, that need to be discussed and agreed upon as a team and approached in terms of getting the mayor and, and his staff to understand what it's going to take in order to have any kind of meaningful impact. So certainly in, in my mind, getting to a point where the Board of Commissioners can be viewed as a check and balance to mayor and his staff. Without that in place, I'm not sure how anything is going to happen or change. Beyond that, the whole issue with potable water, you, you'd have to be half dead not to recognize the impact that that could have on this town.
Mr. Frager, I want to ask you to allow for the next question. So we're on our timeline. Commissioner?
It was four minutes, right?
Yes, it was. That's the.
So can I wind down?
Sure. Was that our end time or?
Yeah, that was the four minutes. It's up to the board's discretion.
Okay, so Commissioner, your question. So do you want to hear more? From, so we can wind down?
Yeah, yeah, maybe a wind down.
Okay.
So in winding down, what I will say is my background is I'm a senior program manager, the last sixteen years of, of my career. Prior to that, I was a vice president of engineering. I was a bench engineer. I've managed programs that had a burn rate of, of thousands of dollars a week. And I've managed programs as large as almost two million dollars a week burn rate. Technical costs and schedule is very important to me. And the things, the skills that I think I bring to the table, along with the ability and, and a mindset to adapt, respond and innovate. I believe in key performance indicators. I don't think you can improve what you can't measure. I believe in transparency. I believe in requirements and the difference between functional and non-functional requirements, which I'm not sure that that is a talent that, that has been demonstrated. And in closing, you know, I had a chance to look at the report that the town put out for competitive award on the whole water issue. And to say that I was disappointed with what I found would be somewhat of an understatement. So I think that key to any competitive award is a statement of work that does something other than lead the witness into coming up with a financial report that gives you information that you wanted to get. So it, the, the water issue was, there were, there was no science. There was no technology involved. I talked to the guy and the company that, that responded, that was awarded the, the issue from the town of Emmitsburg. And I can tell you without a shadow of doubt, and it is something that you can check for yourself. It was a financial review to help the town understand how to tell the community that we're going to raise the rate thirty six percent for five years. I asked for a copy of the statement of work. I wasn't given one. I talked to the guy that wrote the response that, that was prepared and, and given to this board. So I hope I answered your question. I did my best.
Thank you. I also have a question number two.
Yes, ma'am.
What steps should the Board of Commissioners take to ensure transparency and accountability?
So you know, transparency in my mind is to begin every question and every action with what is our purpose? Okay. And in my mind, the purpose of a public servant is to take action for someone other than themselves. They're there to serve other people. And so if we do that and we believe that we can improve what we can't measure and we understand that the rules of engagement are in writing and, and those can't be changed easily. Those are what I would call functional requirements. But there's something called non-functional requirement, a functional requirement in the engineering world. And this is systems engineering one oh one is nothing more than what is it a system or a solution is supposed to provide? It doesn't necessarily tell you how. And so there's a lot lost when you read an ordinance and you take it at face value. The ordinance says, serve coffee at every meeting. Okay. Well, it doesn't tell you whether or not you serve it with cream and sugar or with, in a styrofoam cup or, or something else. And you have to look at all of the functional requirements and ask yourself, are they telling me what to do or how to do it? Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we now turn to Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes, ma'am.
At the April Town Board Meeting, the Board approved on a four to one vote an ordinance to increase water rates by thirty six percent per year for the next five years. And thereafter, an annual increase of three percent. If fully implemented, the five years of increases will increase the cost of water to residents by three hundred and sixty three percent for minimum based users. Would you have voted for or against this ordinance? Please explain your answer.
So I would have done exactly what I did. I asked for a copy of the presentation that I, I didn't have the pleasure of, of listening to. And I started asking questions. I would not have supported it. And you know, you may find this hard to believe, but I'm not bashful. And so I pointed out to a number of people, I thought what I heard is that this was a review of how the town of Emmitsburg processes water. How they use science and technology and process to, to result in potable drinking water. That's not what I found. What I found was it was nothing more than a financial review with, according to the guy that wrote it. He was asked to provide the information in, in such a manner that it would make a professional financial presentation to a town. He didn't have any engineers on his staff. They were only accountants and, and you know, I'm going to say bean counter, and I don't mean that in a pejorative way, but that's the kind of people that wrote that report. And so how could I support something that is a thirty six percent increase, not once, but five consecutive years that didn't look at what did we do wrong? That, that resulted in that kind of need? And I had to ask myself, why would I allow the same thinking that created the problem? Solve it? What I was appalled at, quite frankly, Ms. Turnquest, is where in this country can you perform year over year that resulted in the kind of problem that only a thirty six percent increase year over year can solve? And, and still walk away with a seven percent cost of living and, and increase for the job that you did? Keep your job and continue to apparently produce and deliver a product or a service the same way you always have. So I don't understand how these kinds of decisions get made. I'm not blaming anybody. What I'm doing is asking myself, how can I adapt to this environment to understand and become, you know, if, if I'm given the opportunity, one of you? And sit in your seat and go home to my family and explain to them, yeah, we just came up with a solution. Okay, thirty six percent increase, five consecutive years. Nobody is held accountable for how we, we got to this point. And no other changes that, that I can identify.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you need to end because there's been a complaint.
Okay, so we move on. Okay, thank you, sir. So we turn to our final question?
Excuse me, there's been a complaint?
Yes, sir, to the mayor.
Did I do something?
No, for allowing them to go over the time.
For the, for.
Yes.
Allow it on our file, on our part, we're trying.
I apologize.
No worries. Mr. Sweeney?
I'll make sure I stay under four minutes this time. I'm sorry. I believe the skills that I bring to the table that I have used with, in, in leadership positions where not a public company, but a private company where success is measured by profit and loss. Okay? I would take these skills and I would do the best I can to make, if, if all of you aren't aware of the same skills, I didn't invent anything that I've used to be successful over the years. It, it was taught to me and I would do everything I could, Mr. Sweeney, to share that perspective and that point of view. Did I answer your question?
Thank you, sir. That's appreciated. Okay, so there's been a request for a recess. Commissioner, quick question for you. Four minutes, would that be okay? Or do you need more time or five minutes? I mean, just a, it's five, okay?
Can we finish up the open session and then take a recess between open and closed? We need to set the agenda for November sixth, if that's okay with Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes, did you want to ask question four?
I was going to, yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're taking.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Let's finish.
Okay, so this is a question that comes from former Commissioner Davis, Mayor Davis. All right, it says, please tell us about a time when you had to deal with a complicated or detailed conflict. How did you go about navigating and resolving that situation? Please share your general thoughts on communication skills and conflict resolution.
Okay, so what you asked me is to define to you a difficult situation that I had to deal with.
Yes, you want to reread?
No, I, okay. I got the gist, okay? And so I learned something in my career the hard way. Okay, and what I learned is, and I didn't realize this, you know, I've, I've looked at myself over the years and I said, I know how to start a program. I know how to finish a program and I know how to execute in between. But I hadn't, I've always been brought in at the tail end of a program to bring it to closure. That, that is something that someone other than me decided that, that I should do. Okay, except I had one opportunity where it was the biggest program that I, I ever had, senior program manager, five hundred million dollars. Okay, over five years. That was a program that had a burn rate of two million dollars a week. And so what I learned is the mortality rate on the first program manager of a brand new program is very low. Okay, they don't last long. And I realized why. I didn't write the proposal. I wasn't involved in the proposal. I was brought in because I had a reputation with this agency and this customer. And one of the first things that we had to do is all of our development work was done in what's called a SCIF. It's a classified area. And there was a switch that was necessary to keep all of the classified areas talking to one another. And the proposal said that we had the switch, we owned it, it's in inventory, it's going to be delivered on day one of the program. We didn't have the switch. It wasn't an inventory. And so as the new program manager, I had to tell our customer that we lied to them in, in our proposal. You know, it wasn't intentional. Okay, and, and I didn't say we lied to them. But with a great deal of tact, I not only had to explain to our customer, but I had to explain to the congressional. I, I'm not sure what, what Congress calls themselves, but any program of record and a program of record is one beyond a certain dollar value. When something goes wrong, Congress needs to know about it. And I had to sit and explain to them and take the company perspective. And what I did to the best of my human ability is internalize the blame. And what I did to the best of my human ability is internalize the blame on me. My, my only saving was I was able to say I didn't write the proposal. Okay, but I didn't do my job to verify before I made the commitment to you that that switch would be installed on time as, as promised. And so I, I think I learned humility, embarrassment, how to grovel and, and crawl a little bit. But I also told the truth. I can't say that I, I recovered with this customer. It was a lesson in humility. Okay? And so you know, results matter, but not at the expense of relationships. And so that would be my answer to to Mayor Briggs, I'm sorry, Mayor Davis. Was that tape? Can you erase that?
I owe you an apology, sir. I, for some reason, I had thought Mayor Davis had joined us. So I was thinking he was going to pose the question. So that's on me. I apologize. I saw movement in the hallway. I thought he was joining us. So sorry about that. So thank you. We appreciate you coming in and sharing your time with these questions and.
And, and you're done with me?
I won't say that, but we appreciate your energy.
For tonight.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Y'all come back now, here.
Correct, correct. Okay, now. Process.
You need to read the closed meeting and make the official vote that you're going to go into closed session. I can read the agenda items for numbers that November 6th, 1st, or you can announce the closed session.
All right, so why don't I let you read the agenda items?
Okay.
And then we will move forward.
Okay, they're basically all the same that we set in October. I just want to refresh and I reworded two of them. For number one will be for consideration approval of new commissioner. Number two will be swearing in of new commissioner. Number three, for consideration reorganization, reorganization of Board of Commissioners. Number four, for consideration proclamation for MML Municipal Government Works Month. Number five, for consideration standard operating procedures for the Community Legacy Facade Grant. Number six, for consideration authorizing $30,000 of ARPA money for the water fund in fiscal year 2024.
Ms. Willetts?
Yes.
30,000?
300,000, my apologies. Yes, 300,000. Number seven will be discussion and presentation by Chantel on Glow Fiber. And then I have one consent agenda item, which will be to appoint Patricia Galloway as a full member of the Planning Commission with a term of November 6, 2023 to March 1 of 2026. So that will be for the November 6th meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Bowman-Palat's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Bowman-Palat. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries four to zero with all current commissioners present. Okay, so. The announcement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so here we go. At the close of the October 18th, 2023 Town Meeting, the Town, sorry, the Emmitsburg Mayor and Board of Commissioners intend to meet in closed session for the purpose of consulting with staff, consultants or other individuals to discuss personnel, a personnel matter. The authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the General Provisions Article, Section 3-305, Subsection B, Subsection 1, Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss personnel matters. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. Now we move to the motion. Okay, so. I'm going to ask, chain of command sequence, if I'm making this motion, the recent Vice President of the Board is no longer with us.
Right.
The Treasurer?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney, I'm going to handle, handle this to you. You're going to sit as president while I make a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
President, can you reread that for me, please?
Sure. Okay. At the close of the October 18th, 2023 Town Meeting, the Emmitsburg Mayor and Board of Commissioners intend to meet in closed session for the purpose of consulting with staff, consultants or other individuals to discuss a personnel matter. The authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the General Provisions Article, Section 3-305, Subset B, Subset 1, Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss a personnel matter. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended.
Okay, well, you start, I'm sorry, you started with, the reason for the closure is to consult with staff or consultants? I didn't think that was the purpose of the closed meeting tonight.
Do you have the checklist up there, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I do not.
Do you have it?
So actually.
Okay, so.
What you received was, it was an old one.
All right.
So this is one right here.
Okay.
So the subsection is correct, but the, it's to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, all right.
There. And then the section of the annotated code is correct, but this is the actual subsection.
Okay, so I will cite from the subsection. So we're on the right page and on the same page. Okay? And this is under the section Statutory Authority to Close Session. This meeting will be closed under General Provision, Article 3-305, Subsection B, Section, Subsection 1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So that's the the whole of it. So I think with appointees, I think that's where we're, okay.
Thank you.
You're sure. Okay, so Mr. Sweeney, I turn over the gavel to you. I'm going to make a motion related to closing the meeting and then opening the closed session. Okay, so I make a motion to close the October 18th, 2023 Town Meeting at 8:21 PM for a closed executive session to discuss a personnel matter. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Turnquist, second in, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, any nays?
Thank you, sir.
Are you going to take a five-minute recess?
Yes, so at this time, we will, the, the meeting is, the public meeting is closed. If anyone needs to take care of any personal matters, let's have a five-minute recess.